We're going to get started. I'm trying not to use the gavel because I don't like using the gavel. It seems a little extreme. So, thank you all for being here. We've got a packed house today. We've got some really important issues on the agenda today. So, thank you all for being here to weigh in. We start our meetings with silent prayer and the pledge of allegiance. So, please join us in silent prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, this is a regular meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. It's October 30th, 2025. We'll start with introductions on the dais.
Quinn Falter, Executive Assistant.
Chrissy Rishel, Assistant Clerk.
Stephanie Summer Odumis, Commissioner.
County Commissioner, Alicia Reese.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
I'm Schoolly, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Again, welcome to everyone that's here. I'm going to make a motion to approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse? Yes. Commissioner Summer Odumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. We're going to go to public comments. We've got two different issues in front of us. And so, we are going to go with the property tax, the piggyback first. We've got a number of speakers. And so, I'm going to do this as efficiently and as accurately as I can. Our first speaker is Jason Simmons.
Thank you. My name is Jason Simmons, and I'm an elected member of the Forest Hills School District Board of Education representing Anderson Township in the Village of Newtown. I'm here before you today to provide testimony and strong opposition of this property tax relief measure under consideration. As you know, the state puts the burden on local communities to fund public services like schools, parks, libraries, and public safety. The reason these levies are necessary is because in a district like Forest Hills, the state only funds about 20% of what is necessary to operate our district. The rest comes from local support in the form of property taxes from levies. According to estimates provided, if this proposal passes, Forest Hills School District is projected to lose $1.7 million in its 2526 budget with an additional $900,000 being cut from our township and parks. Our district's operating expenses are about 85% people, so it's teachers and staff. A budget cut of $1.7 million to our school district means cutting 15 to 20 teachers. That means larger class sizes, higher student-to-teacher ratios, fewer participation opportunities in sports and extracurricular activities, which we know will lead to poorer educational outcomes. The irony of this, though, is that if you pass this measure, it will mean our school district, township, and parks will need to go back to our residents sooner and more frequently than expected, asking for even more money, which will come in the form of increased property taxes, which defeats the whole purpose of this measure. I want to pay less in taxes, like everybody here does, but this isn't the fix. It'll read good in the headlines, but it'll cripple communities who are largely dependent on property taxes for our local services. Instead, let's look to Columbus to provide relief in the form of bipartisan budget reform and pressure our representatives and state senators to do what is constitutionally required of them, and that is provide free, public education to all children. That means appropriately funding public education, not asking local communities to shell out every five to seven years to pay for it themselves. When that happens, we'll truly see the property tax relief that you're seeking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Brandon Atwood. Got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brandon Atwood. I am the President of the Board of Education for the Norwood City School District. Today, I want to highlight some critical issues affecting local education funding. Recently, legislation like House Bill 96 has expanded authority for county officials to review tax millage and revenue streams, potentially leading to increased scrutiny and reductions of property taxes. The Hamilton County Commissioners are considering a proposal to expand the homestead exemption, which would lower Norwood School District revenue by approximately $400,000 annually and eliminate more than $23 million in revenue for public education across the county. While the state usually reimburses such discounts, it has indicated it will not do so for this expansion. So, this is truly lower funding. Additionally, Commissioners are contemplating reducing inside millage, which currently generates around $2.5 million annually for the Norwood City School District. Several bills are also in progress at the state level that threaten public school district revenues alongside veto overrides and grassroots efforts to eliminate property taxes altogether. It is important to note that these decisions, like the ones before you today, could be delayed by a year, allowing time to assess the impact of the other legislative actions. Managing property tax growth must be done carefully to avoid harming school funding. Currently, Ohio ranks 45th nationally in public education funding, providing $2,672 less per student than the national average. For example, Norwood City School District only receives $875 in state core funding per student, with the rest coming from property taxes. Since 1997, Ohio's public school funding has been challenged and voted unconstitutional in courts due to its heavy reliance on property tax revenues and insufficient state funding.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Senator Bill Seitz. You have the pleasure of the floor for two minutes, sir.
Thank you.
We'll see how we do, right?
Right. I'm Bill Seitz. This summer, Governor Dwyane asked me to co-chair a working group on property taxes. Commissioner Treehouse was part of our group. We issued our report on September 30 with 20 solid recommendations, some of which have already been accepted by at least the House that's voted on some bills incorporating some of our recommendations. I oppose the proposal here on the piggyback for three main reasons. Number one, it is easy to give away other people's money, but it's not fair, and it's not right. The county would lose $1.6 million under this proposal in annual revenue, but the rest of the jurisdictions in Hamilton County would lose $34 million, including, for example, $7.5 million just to the Cincinnati Public Schools, $900,000 to the Wenton Woods School District. Princeton School District would lose over $1.1 million, and the list goes on and on. Number two, this proposal is not necessary right now because the legislature is moving smartly to deal with the root of the problem. The root of the problem is very, very simple, which is real estate valuation increases have significantly outstripped the general rate of inflation. And so, the bill that is likely to pass very soon, based on our recommendation on the task force, whenever real estate valuations are higher than the general rate of inflation, for inside millage and school districts below the 20 mil floor, they'll be capped at inflation. They will not get these windfalls resulting from higher valuations. And then, number three, I would only add that the legislature, as they try to fix this problem, has actually made it worse for many school districts. In Hamilton County, 51.7% of the students attend school districts that will be badly impacted by a legislative proposal that would apply new rules to existing levies before they even run out. So, those are three good reasons why you should stop and think and hopefully refrain from doing this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Darrell Yater. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the time to address the issue of the piggyback. I'm Darrell Yater, Superintendent of Northwest Local Schools. Over the past 50 years, Ohio legislatures have enacted laws that have impacted the fundamental promise of a state and local partnership to fund public education. In the mid-'90s, the Ohio Supreme Court ruled on the Duroff case indicating the method of funding schools was unconstitutional. Since then, the state share of public education funding reached a high of about 50%, but is on track in 2027 to be the lowest Ohio has ever funded public schools in Ohio history, reaching only 32% of state funding. In addition, the local partnership between residents and businesses has also been greatly changed. It moved from a near-equal partnership in about '75 to residents paying 67% and businesses paying only 32% in 2023 of school property taxes. These are state-level issues that need to be fixed at that level. The tool they have provided you is no more than a sledgehammer that, if used, would continue to break away the already eroded foundation of public education funding. If enacted, this piggyback exemption would create immediate and lasting negative impacts on our children. They would lose access to teachers and support staff who address the real mental health crisis that our children are experiencing and remove layers of support that enable them to be ready to learn. It would also impact instruction and make it harder for our talented educators to continue to bridge gaps and minimize the enrichment opportunities that can be provided. You have the great privilege and enormous responsibility to represent everyone, including students who may not have a voice in this process. Your decision will have lasting impacts on the success of our students, the safety and stability of our communities, and the ability of our children to be future leaders. Instead of using the sledgehammer provided to you, I beg you to join us in asking the legislator to enact balanced, sustainable, and equitable reforms to help homeowners without hurting schools, local governments, and essential services. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next card is two people. It's Lynn Mangan and John Espy. Good morning.
Good morning, President Treehouse, Commissioners and staff. My name is Lynn Mangan, and my coworker or my colleague, John Espy, is the CFO, and I'm here today as Vice President of the Loveland City School Boards of Education, a resident of Hamilton County, and an Ohio Public School graduate. Over the last six years on our Board of Education and a community member, I have advocated for investing in our community's children. There is simply no more important investment than in our kids. This has involved chairing school levy committees, working side by side with our district leaders on prudent fiscal policies, outstanding student success and wellness, community advisory teams, and advocating at the State House to ensure proper education funding. I believe in being highly accountable to our community members and ensuring that our tax dollars are spent judiciously with solid outcomes. The current proposal to increase the homestead exemption and the owner occupancy credit is a trade-off, protecting our seniors while harming our children. We must design solutions that protect vulnerable residents, both our kids and our seniors. Without the state funding this burden, the local property tax burden will increase. I believe this is the exact opposite of the Commissioner's intended impact. The direct impact on our schools would be 527,000 with minimal effects on our community's seniors. We take our fiscal responsibility very seriously. We are proud to spend less per pupil than the state average and rank in the top 10% of public schools across the state. We are conscientious about when we ask for additional funding and receive a minimal amount well under the inflationary cost from inside millage. These types of cuts without adequate support from the state increase our local needs and requests. Please place the burden for property tax relief directly where it belongs, on our state legislators and the state budget, not on the children of our county. We respectfully request that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners vote against the proposed doubling of the homestead exemption and owner occupancy credits. Please seek a solution that protects the stability and quality of our public education in Hamilton County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Our next speaker is the Mayor of Forest Park, Aaron Brown. Good morning.
Good morning, County Commissioners. I'm going to try to keep it short because politicians can be long-winded. So, I'm not here only as the mayor of the beautiful city of Forest Park, but also as an alum of Wenton Woods School District. And I also rise in opposition to this property tax relief measure. Now, we've heard a lot of numbers about what the impact of the general fund and the surrounding jurisdictions would be in aggregate. But at the same time, as someone who was a student of Wenton Woods, the impact of this on the individual student could be immeasurable. As my senior year occurred in Wenton Woods, we also lost a lot of funding, and we did not have school buses. So, as we think about the number of 34 million or 1.6 million to these different general funds, I want everyone to consider the individual impact on the students and then their families, because this will have the opposite impact of having my residents actually come back to the levy to raise property taxes anyway. So, I just want people to consider that, that as we throw around the numbers, we want to think about also the individual impact on students and their families. And this is not the time for local governments to be cutting funding, as we're seeing from the current administration, but this is the time for governments to step up and create solutions that create tangible, meaningful, material improvements to the conditions of the families and their lives. And with that, I will conclude my remarks, and thank you for allowing me speak today.
Thank you very much for coming in. Our next speaker is Natalie Hastings.
Sorry. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today in opposition of the piggyback tax relief. My name is Natalie Hastings, and I'm a parent in Forest Hills School District. In 2021, in a low turnout election with an influx of candidates, we ended up with four school board members who ran on a platform to, quote, abolish CRT and to promote, quote, fiscal responsibility. These new board members soon learned that the CRT in our schools was just as nonexistent as any fiscal irresponsibility. And even as they passed resolutions and policies counter to our community's value, we, the community, showed up to approve a combined permanent improvement in operating levy in 2023. They tried to poke holes in our treasurer's five-year forecast and fired them because they didn't understand what ESER funds were. Each time our community has shown up for our schools, submitting testimony for fair school funding, donating the funds so that we could join the Voucher Hurt Ohio lawsuit, and demanding to rehire our award-winning treasurer, and we continue to show up for our schools. So, today I ask you, will you show up for them? Please don't give in to pressure from the legislator about withholding capital budget if you don't make use of this, quote-unquote, "tool." Just yesterday, they decided not to fund SNAP benefits because they said it was Congress's responsibility. They said they're responsible, the government is responsible. They shouldn't be bailing out the feds. Besides, they said, it's a temporary fix. The residents of Hamilton County will bear the burden of this because of Columbus. And they have a $4 billion rainy day fund that could provide real property tax relief. And besides, the piggyback is only a temporary fix, and apparently, they don't like those. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jenny Logan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jenny Logan, and I'm the Treasurer CFO for Sycamore Community Schools. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. We understand and appreciate the intent behind the proposed piggyback measure for the homestead and 2.5% owner-occupied credit. Property tax relief is a real and growing concern for our residents, and we agree that this effort, standing on its own, could have merit. However, we are deeply concerned about the cumulative impact of multiple property tax proposals currently being considered both locally and at the state level. While this particular measure may appear modest, its effect is amplified when layered with pending state legislation that could significantly erode the financial stability of public schools. For Sycamore alone, which receives 85% of our revenue from our local tax base, this proposal would mean an annual loss of approximately $1.2 million with no state reimbursement to offset that reduction. Our recently approved financial forecast already shows a projected cash deficit by 2030. In response, our board adopted financial parameters to limit expenditure growth to 3.5% annually, a strong demonstration of our commitment to fiscal restraint and responsibility. At this moment, the prudent step is to press pause. We need a full understanding of the impending pending state changes before introducing additional local measures that could have unintended long-term consequences for our schools and our community. Thank you for your time in considering the broader context as you deliberate this important decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Hoing. I got it wrong again, didn't I? I know. I do it every time. Sorry about that.
Good morning. My name's Daniel Hoing, General Counsel for Cincinnati Public Schools. Cincinnati Public Schools stands to lose more funding under this proposal than any other taxing jurisdiction, including Hamilton County itself. If the proposal were approved, Hamilton County would forego $1.6 million in general fund, a total of 7.2 in combined general and levy funds. CPS would lose $7.5 million. CPS and the other school districts impacted by this measure should be included in the conversation. With all due respect, the school districts deserve more discussion and consultation with county leaders than can be provided in a two-minute hearing of the public. CPS funding has been cut at every level of government in the last 12 months, federal level, state level, and the local level, with one exception, Hamilton County. The state budgeting process this year was particularly difficult and damaging, and there's more pending legislation that would have an even greater negative effect, making local taxes ever more critical. have an even greater negative effect, making local taxes ever more critical. One trend particularly troubling has been the General Assembly granting county officials, including county budget commissions, the unilateral ability to reduce school district property taxes and school levies that were previously approved by voters. But at CPS, this was not something on our radar. Our feeling was that although CPS was aware the state was granting more discretion to the county officials, CPS has had such a longstanding and strong partnership with Hamilton County that we felt confident that there was not a risk that our county officials would vote to reduce school district funding. You can imagine our surprise when we learned last week that Hamilton County was considering a measure that would have such an immediate and significant effect on school district funding. The proposal, if adopted, would reduce funding to the county's 22 school districts by close to $25 million. The county administrator's memo to you dated more than three weeks ago says that one step before moving forward is to assess the impact of this measure on other affected taxing districts, and yet no one from the county has consulted with CPS or the other districts. We urge you not to adopt this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've got another tag team, a couple. It's Larry Hook and Elena Cropper. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for our opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Larry Hook. I'm the Superintendent from the Forest Hills School District, and this is Lana Cropper, Treasurer and CFO from the Forest Hills School District. At Forest Hills, we take great pride in being both high-performing as well as fiscally responsible. Both our high schools rank in the top 5% statewide, and our middle and elementary schools consistently rank in the top 10%.
From a financial standpoint, we are careful stewards of public funds. Our residential millage rate is about average for Hamilton County, yet our cost per pupil is 10% below the state average, and our revenue per pupil is 15% lower. Because the state funding model provides only 18% of our general fund, we depend heavily upon local voter support. In 2018, Forest Hills was placed in pre-fiscal emergency by the Ohio Department of Education. Since then, we've had to make hard decisions to reduce staffing and programs, and our community has responded by passing two levies to bring our schools back to fiscal responsibility and stability. If the proposed property tax exemptions move forward, Forest Hills would lose about 1.7 million in voter-approved revenue. That's the equivalent of almost 17 teachers. We are asking you to honor local control and respect the decisions of our voters. They have chosen to invest in their children's education, and that commitment should not be undone. We respectfully ask that you vote against the proposed increase in property tax exemptions today. Lasting property tax relief will require the state of Ohio to take a greater share in school funding, as most other states already do. State, county, and local leaders need time to pursue a fair and equitable solution. Thank you so much for your time and your service to Hamilton County.
Appreciate it. Our next group is Dr. Damon Davis and Jennifer Burke.
Good morning, President Dreehouse, Vice President Dumars, and Commissioner Reese. My name is Damon Davis, and I am the Superintendent of Redding Community City Schools, and with me today is our Treasurer, Jennifer Burke. On behalf of the Redding Community City School District and the Board of Education, we are here to express our deep concern about the proposed property tax alternatives currently being considered by the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. While we understand the intent to provide relief to taxpayers, the proposed legislation to piggyback homestead and owner occupied credits for qualified taxpayers would have significant unintended consequences for our public schools and the students we serve in Redding. For the Redding Community City School District, the proposed changes would result in an estimated reduction of $180,000 from the homestead credit and $102,000 from the owner occupied credit. For our district, this is the equivalent of 3% of our budget. In addition, due to House Bill 96 not updating the fair school funding inputs, the district recently lost an additional $2.8 million over the life of our forecast. As a school district, we cannot forecast with accuracy when our revenue sources continue to change. While these measures offer limited relief to a small group of taxpayers, they create a substantial financial harm to all public school districts in Hamilton County. This proposal disproportionately impacts public and charter schools, which are not only major employers in their communities, but also educate over 90% of students in Ohio and are the centerpieces in the heart of our communities. They undermining school funding threatens not only educational quality, but also social and economic stability for our communities. Schools require reliable and predictable sources of revenue. I urge the Board to consider that these property tax proposals do not offer sustainable relief for struggling taxpayers. Instead, they shift more costs and increase the unpredictability of school funding. Before making any changes, we urge you to consider alternative revenue sources that are thoroughly vetted and that public education and the future of our students are protected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mimi Webb.
We're going to speak together. My name is Nick Hendricks. I'm the Treasurer of St. Bernard Elmwood Place. This is Dr. Mimi Webb, Superintendent of St. Bernard Elmwood Place. I just wanted to tell you guys today, never want to delay gratitude. Thank you for allowing us all to come here. A lot of smart individuals in this room. I think Mr. Seitz said it correctly. You know, 155,000 is what St. Bernard would be out. That's one mill or two teachers. I know we're a very small school district, but as Mr. Seitz said, there's over 20 recommendations on the table. We hope that this somewhat of a knee-jerk reaction for some of our taxpayers that need the cut, we understand and realize that there is a necessary need. We hope that the Working Committee can work through those and have a full Board that with everybody at the table to be able to speak their piece. Dr. Webb would like to speak on the school.
While all these numbers get kicked around, they're impressive, they're large. But the reality is, we're talking about students' lives. We're not talking about the next school year. We're talking about generational poverty that will impact our communities. If I don't have the resources to try and make my school as good as other schools, it reflects on the report card. My kids come to school hungry. They come to school ill-prepared. They haven't had the luxury of a nice fancy preschool environment. So we literally start at ground zero when the students show up. In some respects, this is nothing more than a poverty tax. In some respects, this is punishing the most needy people around. I am a senior citizen. I am a owner-occupied house. I'll give that up to support our school systems. To not support the school system is to increase students who will someday be taking care of us as we get older. And I hope that they know how to do that. And we are sometimes their only hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Our next speakers are Thomas Lowe and John Hamstun. I got it wrong, didn't I? Sorry. All right. Sorry, 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 sorry.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Thomas Lowe, Treasurer for Southwest Local School District. Now with me, John Hamstra, our Superintendent for Southwest Local School District. I would like to say that the loss of $500,000-plus to Southwest through this piggyback provision would be devastating for our district. The new foundation funding formula has taken away $3 million from Southwest already. House Bill 186 stands to take away another $3 million. That is a significant sum of money for us. When you look at the reductions that would be necessary, from the already reduction in aid would be 40 FTE or a significant increase in local property taxpayer levies. When you look at the current state of where we are at and what this would cost us, you're talking about an additional seven to 10 FTEs for this measure alone. When we're already talking about 40, that's significant. When you're talking about a situation where you're already spending very little on extras, we're down to the legally required minimums, the things that get removed are things that affect students and the most vulnerable students amongst us. Those are things that address mental health concerns, graduation rates, and things that impact students' daily lives. This funding is important to us, and I appreciate you considering not doing this measure for us and for our kids. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Michael Guston.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Michael Guston. I am the Treasurer and Chief Financial Officer of Cincinnati Public Schools. Last week, I was proud to stand here, along with our Superintendent and Board President, and the Treasurers of Loveland, Forest Hills, Sycamore, Oak Hills, and Northwest Local. Today, you've heard from several more of my colleagues, and I understand you receive letters from Winton Woods, Norwood, Princeton, and Madeira. All of us are urging you to reconsider the proposal to expand the homestead and owner-occupied tax credits, not because we are against property tax reform, but because we are in favor of the students that we serve. This year has been a series of sustained attacks on public education at the federal, state, and local level. A proposal today would take $7.5 million from Cincinnati Public Schools, starting next calendar year. We've had no notice and no time to plan for such an extreme loss. Many districts here also have levies on the ballot next Tuesday. Those requests were based upon a predictable and stable property tax system that is now threatened, not just by the lawmakers in Columbus, but by this very Board. Last week, I told you that $7.5 million equals 66 teacher salaries and benefits. If we are forced to make these cuts, though, it won't just be teachers affected. Most of our classrooms are at their contractual limits for student size. The things we will have to cut are the various support systems our kids rely upon: security, transportation, paraprofessionals, extracurriculars. $7.5 million equals the salary and benefits of 152 of our hourly employees. I recognize this is a tough issue. Taxpayers are stretched thin. This new law, though, creates a false choice between our kids' future and our elders' stability, a loss for all of us in Hamilton County. Please vote no and join us in pushing back on the state for real property tax solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That is the last speaker's card I have on this topic. Is there anyone else here to speak to this? Okay, thank you very much. And as was noted, we got quite a few communications related to this topic. I've got, and I'm going to enter them for the record. I think we all got them. I think the clerk got them too, but I did want to note that there were over, I think about 25 or so communications coming in from Great Parks and Silverton and the library and other entities and individuals, taxpayers, that wrote to us. And so I'm going to offer those for the record. And thank you all for coming in. I know it's a struggle to come in at this time of day and to park in front of our building. I know it's challenging. Some of you took the streetcar evidently. I'm glad of that. But it's really important that we hear from you. We're making big decisions that affect everyone, and it's really important that we hear from especially the folks that are impacted by way of the schools and the kids that you serve. It goes without saying that we all want to provide property tax relief. We are tuned in to the struggles of some of the individuals in this community that got a high tax bill in the last assessment, and we are sensitive to that. The question is, how do we do that? And so as Senator Seitz mentioned, there was a working group. I was a member of that 11-person working group put together by the governor, and we offered 20 solutions to this, and some were, you know, had larger impacts than others. But they, some of them included the homestead expansion and a circuit breaker, but those relief mechanisms supported by the state. Knowing that if we do something locally, it's not just county that suffers from that in our levies, but all of the school levies and all the jurisdictions that are in Hamilton County. And I think that's the real problem for us. That's the crux of it, and that's what you've been speaking to, and I appreciate you bringing that to the forefront of the conversation. We also talked about things like providing relief for those that are delinquent on the property taxes. We talked about a deferral mechanism if an elderly person is in their home, they've been in the home a long time, and they can't afford the increase in taxes, deferring that until the home is sold to the next person. So we've got a lot of different ideas that are on the table, and one of the significant proposals was House Bill 335. Senator mentioned this. This is a long-term solution to this problem, and it caps inside millage to inflation. And so the spikes that we saw would no longer take place. Those would be reduced to the rate of inflation, and so the taxpayers wouldn't see those kinds of increases if House Bill 335 goes into effect. It has already passed the House. It's in the Senate right now, and from what I understand, it has legs and it might move. And so that is a long-term solution, and it is a state solution, which is the most appropriate place for these solutions to be discussed and take place. So I'm grateful to the Legislature for doing that piece. I do wish that there was a more immediate response from them related to the homestead expansion and the circuit breakers. So we've had many good ideas. This piggyback, where the burden falls to the local communities, is not one of them. It has too many negative impacts and does to the locals what the state is doing to us, passing the buck. We should not be passing the buck. So the state has the capacity, unlike the county and unlike the school districts and the municipalities and the townships, to take on this kind of relief, and they should do it. They've got tax exemptions, $12 billion worth of tax breaks they give away every year. I've got a list of those. I'm happy to provide it if anybody's interested. And they also have a very, as was mentioned, an enormous rainy day fund that sits at historic levels, near $4 billion. And so that is what you are asking for. I appreciate all that you've said, all the folks that have come in and weighed in on the issue. As you can see, there's nothing on the agenda related to this, but it is a conversation that we have been having here at the county level, and so you clearly are keyed into that, and I appreciate your take on it. Commissioner Summer O'Denness.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming in and voicing your passion and how this will impact you. The state thought that we would be the fall guy, and we're refusing to be, I'm refusing to be the fall guy. We are not going to take the crumbs from the table. And when you talk about children, seniors, mental health and recovery, and county funding, we rise up, and that's what you guys and ladies have done today. You've risen up. I was trying to think, as I thought about this issue, a win-win for everybody. And there is a win-win, because I'm a property owner, and the property owners are also, some of them are seniors, they have children and grandchildren in the schools. They would be directly impacted by the ability for their young people to be able to go to school. I started writing notes when you guys were talking, how much you would lose and how the impact. I just stopped writing. It's commonsensical for me, what we need to do. So just hearing it helps me tremendously, but there's, for me, no way that we can agree on piggyback or homestead or anything, because, I mean, you talk about these school systems. These are, as was said earlier, children are our future, and seniors are our future, and mental health, all those are needs. And so state needs to step up, as was said earlier. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who has come in here today. Let me say that I am and have always been a very bold person, indicating that I'm a proud graduate and product of the Cincinnati Public Schools, Withrow High School. And I have worked many times to help get things passed, levies and those kind of things. I want to say that what has been said in this room is super important. I also want to say that just not too long ago last year, this same room was just as packed with people upset, screaming and hollering about the property taxes. I want to say that in this same building, I saw senior citizens going to stand in line to try to pay their property taxes and crying. And as you've indicated, you want the students and the youth to one day take care of senior citizens. And I felt like one of those people, who I wanted to take care of the people that were, I mean, literally breaking down, crying about to lose their homes. We've never seen anything like this before. It's never happened before. Yes, people complained about property taxes, but it had never been this high. It had never been people breaking down, crying, falling out, all of that. And this room was just as packed. I mean, if both groups would have been here, we would have had to go probably get a bigger facility. And unfortunately, we have been tasked with trying to figure out how to balance it. Now, it's been said that the formula to fund public schools is unconstitutional. And I know that myself, Commissioner Dreehouse, we were at the State House, but we were in the super minority. We were trying to get this fixed. We were trying to get this fixed. This is, the legislature is lopsided. Now, former Senator Seitz, he's in a different situation. He was in the majority. He was in the rooms. We weren't in the rooms. We could only fuss, fight, and so forth. But in the article that came out after, that came out here, there's a group of citizens that said enough is enough, and they are looking to try to put it on the ballot, because they said the legislature has been playing games for 20 years. They never solved it. It's always been a fight. It's always been public education getting the brunt and the cuts and the short end of the stick. But the legislature's never, ever fixed it. And then it goes on to say, the only reason that they even have interest, because we've been up here, a lot of you I've seen up here, when I was at the state legislature, we'd have met, we've introduced legislation, we proposed, we tried to go bipartisan, we'd have marched. I remember we was marching up at the State House. No action. The only reason that there's any consideration of action. We even met with our delegation, our board. So we said, hey, nobody met. We met with the delegation. We meet with them each year. We brought everybody, Democrats, Republicans. We met down the hall. We even gave them a sandwich and said, can you help us? This has to get fixed. And they even was kind of loom and doom. Said, well, you know, we might introduce something, but you know, just because you introduce something, the way the legislature works, it don't go nowhere. If it's not in the budget, former Senator Seitz understands that. That's why we try to get stuff in the budget. The budget is the only thing that has a deadline. Everything else can go on and on, and we done took it to the House, then we done took it to the Senate, then we done run out of time. Now we got to start over again. It's been over 20 years, and I ain't fixed this system for public education. The only reason that property tax is even getting any type of consideration, because we know that property tax cannot be the way we fund public education. It's not sustainable. We know that. Speaker Matt Huffman, in the article, with the headline saying that, the people, the headline says that, "Ohio Group Seeking to Abolish Property Tax." Now, that'll be out of our hands if it goes to the people. Then it goes on to say they have some bills, they have some committees, and the lady with the group said, it's too late. We gave them 20 years. Only way we can do this is if it's in the hands of the people. Well, then it goes on to say, "House Speaker Matt Huffman, Republican from Lima, knows this and acknowledged that the sudden urgency to pass property tax relief bills after years of inaction." He goes on to say, quote, "I have to say that the threat of a ballot initiative is part of the thing that's driving this." But the question to everybody in this room is, not the county commission, our thing is one year. We got to vote on it every single year. It was not a permanent thing. Every year, we got to vote on this. The real issue is, when it goes to the people because they are frustrated and they go to self-preservation, what happens then? Because the senior citizen lady who probably been supportive, she supports the schools and everything, but she can't hold on to her house in Evanston. What happens then? And that's what I want to be prepared for. What happens then if it gets to the ballot and the people say, I love it, but I can't afford it, because I got to try to keep my house getting ready, going foreclosure? So one of the things that I've been trying to do is, how do we balance both? Grandma want to keep her house. We got federal workers furloughed now, and they got a mortgage due, and ain't getting paid this month. Not getting paid this month, got a mortgage due. Don't know when they gonna get paid, if they ever get paid. So I'm looking for a balance. I know that ours was a one-time approach. I said, I want to look at everything. Maybe it don't work. Maybe this didn't work. This might not be it. But I also went for the 30% that was promised by the taxpayers on the stadiums, and now we done took that off the table. So we can't keep telling the people that are the investors and the funders, who can't get squeezed anymore, that we can't have anything for you. By us taking that off the table, now we got to look at this. Now we look at this, that affects y'all. So I wanted to just understand what time we're in, and I know it's easy to be a yo-yo. We tell them, we tell you, go up 71 North. That's where you need to go. And they tell, when you get up north, they gonna say, no, you go 71 South. They ain't doing it. We even had a person call, because I do this shoppers thing, call up there, because they testified that they were telling, some people at the state was telling people, that your property tax is going up because of the Hamilton County Commission. And this was during the election. So people came down here. Seitz, I know you, look, I get the lady, she over in Northside. You can find her. You can find her. She's with your party. She brought a group down here and said it was us, because she said she called up there and they said it's the county commission. So now we playing games with the people. While we playing these games, bills are due. While we playing these games, the mortgage is due. While we playing these games, foreclosures are coming in. We saying go up 71 and go to some hearings, and they saying come down 71 and get to the county commission race. They're playing a yo-yo with the people and the people's money. And as mentioned earlier, we got SNAP. That's a problem. Now, the legislature is lopsided. There's one group that can do this and get it passed. I saw it. They did it with the Bengals. There was a thing that exempt them from paying sales tax, and we use sales tax for the Bengals. They exempt them, never called us, and they got in there like this. Wasn't no hearing, wasn't no bill from this, they didn't have to go to the House and then to the Senate and in the back. They didn't have to do all that. Now we dealing with the schools, and now we're saying, wait, wait, wait. Now we're dealing with the property owners. Wait, wait, wait. But I'm telling you, the property tax bill is due now. So I do think we need to try to work together, but we got to have some action, because even the people that are our supporters, that support our levies, that go out and say we're going to support it, they're being squeezed. And so we're losing some of our cheerleaders, because they're being squeezed. They want to help, but you can't be charitable if you ain't got no extra money. Can't be charitable if you about to lose your house. And so every decision we make cannot be in a vacuum. People say, oh, well, you know, the Bingo Stadium, that's a different fund. It ain't a different fund. We made it a different fund. Legally, it's not a different fund. It's a sales tax. It's a all-funds. And so I want to have all hands on deck. I wanted to look at everything that's a possibility. And certainly, we're not trying to rob Peter to pay Paul. We want Peter and Paul to both be able to survive. So thank you all for coming. There's nothing on here today that is going to move forward with any of this at this time, but I want to let all of the folks in here know, including myself, who is a proud public school graduate, former class president, class of 1989. We're going to lose some of our champions if we don't fix it, because the property tax people are getting squeezed. And if you lose your house, you ain't got no property tax, right? If it foreclosed, you don't lose, you don't get it. So we got to come together and demand some action and understanding who's in charge. Who's in charge at the State House? Why was this not in the state budget? Why did it take 20 years? Why is it in the paper? They saying the only reason we looking at it now is because the people just finally got fed up and say we going to the ballot. And if they go to the ballot and get to the ballot, that's very dangerous, because now you got to make a choice between keeping your house or keep paying property tax. So I'm happy that people are at the table, but I just see the legislature, I feel like they could solve this in 30 days. But they've always done what I call trickle-down taxation. I made that speech on the House floor, where they run and say, we cut taxes, and then they send it down to the locals, and the only thing you can do is go to get levies, and you're seen as the ones that's raising taxes. And we've got to stop trickle-down taxation. So thanks for y'all being here. I'd love to have a room where you all are here and the other 150 people that came down are in the room and see if we can work together to get something done. My challenge to the state, I'd like to see it fixed in 30 days. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And as was stated, we'll continue to work on this issue. The importance of today was that we have a deadline for this piggyback, and if we're going to do it, we have to do it by tomorrow. And so this was really important for you all to come in today and last week to lend your opinion on this question, because we have this deadline. But that does not to say that we're going to stop thinking about and working on solutions for the property owners in Hamilton County. So I think we've all three said that. So thank you again for being here. Commissioner O'Denness, did you have anything else?
I just had one other comment, and for the older people in the room, you may remember this saying, this old adage, that you don't cut off your nose to spite your face. Some of us remember that. And the reason why I bring that up is, when we're talking about weighing things and balancing, that for me, do you give a property owner $100 or $200 toward their property, which I would receive, versus the loss of millions and millions and millions of dollars, just even say, for the school system? So for me, it's no question of where I am on that.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming in. You're welcome to stay if you'd like. Senator, I know how much you enjoy this. I don't know if the mayor's still here, but you're all welcome to stay. Yeah, yeah. Well, I wanted to make it clear, I think people were confused. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We didn't do it. All right. We are going to move forward. We're going to ask that you carry on your conversations in the lobby. Thank you very much. We've got a number of speakers on a different issue. Hello, Joe. Very nice. That's right. Got the right color. All right. We've got a number of speakers. I believe this is on impervious surface. And so Sue Bills, I've got you going first.
Good morning, county commissioners. We want to thank you for your continued support and leadership over the years. I'm delivering a letter for each of you from COFA, outlining specific requests that we have been told by MSD are possible to implement during 2026. We appreciate seeing the 513 relief bus in our neighborhoods, providing services to many. We know we can do better by providing more services regarding our water bills. We have worked on devising state bills for over five years that are designed to help residents, renters, and people experiencing hardships with water bills. We are grateful that our legislators, Ingram, Thomas, Seitz, Isaacson, Blessing, and Odioso, have also seen the importance of our suggested bills and continue to communicate with us. We know Representative Ingram currently has a bill that needs your support. We know you have reservations. She is willing to make revisions to the bill. Representative Odioso has been working hard to devise a bill that needs your support as well, that truly helps expand and does not harm constituents by excluding renters who pay their bill. We are thankful for their support. We need yours as well. Please pass a resolution that supports state bills to truly help the people. If we need, if we need to revise them so we can help more people, let's get the job done. We want and need your support. Time is not our friend. People need help now, more than ever, as we have just heard. We appreciate those who continue to meet with us and address the hard work that still needs to be completed. Let's get to the finish line together. We believe that changes outlined in our letter can be made immediately. We thank you for your time.
Am I allowed to give you the word? Thank you. Yeah, please provide the letter to the clerk, and she'll distribute it to the rest of us. Our next speaker is Florence Miller. Good morning.
Yes. Thank you, commissioners, for my opportunity to speak. I'm Florence Miller and a member of COFA, and it seems like it is appropriate today to talk about water and overland flooding. So with that, that is a result of the incapacity of the sewer system, and we need and want fair sewer rates, because businesses get a discount. And with that, MSD can immediately lower the CCF's that are being charged for water base on the water and sewer bill, because individuals that are living in their own home have been overcharged for years with a base rate of three, which can be reduced to three CCF's, from three CCF's to two CCF's. And also, we need to incentivize stormwater management through an impervious surface fee that is fair and equitable, which would account for the runoff and the treatment of that stormwater runoff into the sewer system, which has an incapacity. And next, we need to have your budget meetings in the evening, because most people that are working during the day don't have an opportunity to speak, and this affects everybody in Hamilton County. So with that, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Just do want to say that we do have a budget meeting in the evening. Do we have the date of that budget hearing? I just want to offer that information before you all leave. We'll get it, because there is an opportunity in the evening, December 9th. Is it in Norwood? Is it the Board of Elections? We're thinking the Board of Elections, just to put that on your calendar. Thank you. Our next speaker is Marie Kocosis.
Good morning. Yes, good morning. My name is Marie Kocosis. I'm a member of COFA and also a member of the Miami Group Sierra Club, and we've been working very closely with COFA and share their concerns about the impervious surface fee and the rate that many people are paying for years for services they really are not getting. And we believe that the change from three CCF to two CCF is appropriate, and we're working for that. I also would like to just remind you of the history. There was a Rate of Forgiveness Task Force in 2015. I was active with that task force. These proposals, the impervious service fee was there. We've been working a long time for this, and I think it's time to take the burden off the ratepayers and get people who own big parking lots and impervious surface fees to pay their share. It's only fair and equitable. And the Sierra Club, as I said, supports all the points that are in the COFA letter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is David Behrens. Good morning.
Yes, my name is David Behrens. I live in the Kennedy Heights neighborhood, the northern portion of Kennedy Avenue, dead ends, in a steep wooded hillside that leads down to our 40-unit condo building. During heavy rains, like we've had the last couple of days, those heavy rains cause stormwater, which runs off Kennedy Avenue down the hillside and forms a nice big pond, right at the base of our condo building. When I was trying to figure out why this happens, instead of the flowing into a storm sewer, I eventually found out about COFA and what they're trying to do for fair sewer rates, and so here I am today. I was surprised to learn that Metropolitan Sewer District has been resisting the impervious surface fee for over eight years. The impervious surface fee is a nationwide gold standard for equitable storm rates. MSD claims that their 10 billing entities make an impervious surface fee too complex and too costly to implement. Well, we did some research into sewer districts in the tri-state area. Akron, Cleveland, Columbus, Dayton, Indianapolis, Covington, Kentucky, and Florence are just a few of the cities that have an impervious surface fee. The northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District, which includes Cleveland, Cuyahoga County, has 60 billing entities. 55 of those have an impervious surface fee. Fifty-five of those have an impervious surface fee. So if all of these can do it, then I certainly think Hamilton can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Falcone is our last speaker on this. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Larry Falcone. I'm a resident of Pleasant Ridge. I am a product of and supporter of public schools. And I am a member of COFA and support the letter and message that they're delivering to you today and appreciate your scheduling of an evening hearing on the MSD budget. That is one of the requests. I'm also a member of Sierra Club Miami Group, and I wanted to share with you an article that appeared in their November newsletter and is posted on their website. The title of the article is "What Will MSD Give You for Christmas?" The holiday season is also MSD's budget season. By law, MSD's 2026 budget must be adopted by December 31st, 2025. Usually by mid-October, MSD's budget request has been released. But as of October 20th, 2025, we are still waiting for MSD's budget request. We all love waiting for December 25th to see what we'll find under the tree. But last-minute surprises are no way to make public policy. MSD's budget may contain very good news for ratepayers and the environment. Since May, MSD has been proposing and discussing a package of reforms that would motivate landowners to keep their stormwater out of the combined sewers and lessen the financial burden on residential ratepayers. Or MSD's budget may contain bad news, continuing to choose slow and expensive stormwater improvements and making residential customers pay for it. If the Grinch's heart can grow three sizes, then so can MSD's. And you can help. Tell the county commissioners that residents are looking to them for some good news on sewer rates and stormwater management this holiday season.
Thank you.
It includes a link to the Sierra Club's position paper on impervious surface fees.
Thank you. Very seasonal comments. Appreciate that. And just to be clear, we do have two different things happening here. We've got the county budget, which is coming forward soon, very soon, very soon. And then we've got the MSD budget. So Jeff, can you illuminate when we are anticipating seeing the MSD budget and then the hearing surrounding that budget? Because they are two different things, and I didn't mean to mislead. The budget hearing I'm talking about is the broad budget hearing for the overall budget for the county. The MSD is different.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. So yeah, we will be releasing the county's general fund budget and all funds budget here very shortly with hearings to follow in the coming weeks and months. MSD will be shortly behind that. It's been delayed a little bit during this most recent year because of the Phase 2B approvals that we need from the federal regulators and the understanding of how that Phase 2B interacts and interplays with the capital improvement program. So we've needed to understand that to ensure that the CIP and the capital improvement program that the board reviews is correct and compliant with Phase 2B of the consent decree. But it should be shortly behind the release of the all funds budget as well with hearings to happen over the next two months as well.
Right. So keep an eye peeled for those hearings because we will have hearings specific to the MSD budget. Highly irregular. Is it related to the scheduling of the hearing and information? All right.
[inaudible]
Understood. So we're talking about the timing of the hearings and the notice given. And so we will make sure. And I don't know, we do have policies related to how much notice is given for these budgets. So we'll make sure there's plenty of notice and that you're notified. Okay? Thank you. All right. Yes, yes, ma'am. Commissioner Dumas.
Christie was saying two weeks.
Two weeks for a public hearing. So we'll give two weeks' notice. Okay? Yeah. Sure.
And I'm glad you held up the bill and those kind of things. And I just want to, because our colleagues, we don't get to talk to each other directly. But I do want to say that with the times that we're in now, I'm supportive of freezing at this time, any type of rate increases because of all the other increases and all the uncertainty. So just wanted, I know I communicated that to Mr. Ludo, but I just wanted to make sure that that's out there. I may not go that way, but that's the way I am recommending. And I'm just one of three, but I wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. All right. Let's move into comments and motions of the commissioners. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. Commissioner Shomero Dumas.
Thank you all for coming. Just a few comments. I met with Gregory Johnson, who is the director of Metropolitan Housing. I had a private meeting with him as he was getting ready to come before us the following meeting to talk about the travesty of the housing for those in Hamilton County and what the federal government has done. Basically, starting in November, there'll be some reductions. And then in January, lots of reductions in housing. And he's trying very hard. And the question was asked during the press conference, will people be evicted? He indicated that if you're furloughed or for some reason your income goes down, that he will not evict, but he will lower the rate to meet where your income is. So he's looking at that. We're looking at that. It's a major issue. And then the land bake meeting I sat in yesterday, and the Port Authority is doing a lot of acquisition demolition, trying to build some more affordable housing. And then Mount Mariah Baptist Church, which is in Lincoln Heights, the first church ever in Lincoln Heights. I went to give a proclamation in behalf of all the commissioners for their 100th anniversary. It was a fabulous time and lots of historical words that were said. So I thank them so much for inviting me. And then last night, I was on a webinar for JFS, Job and Family Services. They're strategic planning for the next five years. As you know, we will be losing our director of JFS. And they really wanted, a consulting group, really wanted to know what my plans were, what I thought we need to focus on for the next five years. And being a social worker, I had a lot of things input to give. I think we've come a long way. We need to continue, excuse me, to move forward. Lastly, can I not say about SNAP benefits? 97,000 people in Hamilton County will be impacted by the loss of SNAP benefits starting tomorrow. Approximately 53,000 adults, 44,000 children. I had also mentioned, I was imploring that the for-profit CEOs help us, help us to donate gift cards, money toward this effort for November. I don't know how long it will last. We don't know. If they can give whatever they can give, I've been in touch with several CEOs. They will be calling me back. But I challenged them November 1st to go one day without eating, go two days without eating, let your children go without eating. And it's not on them. It's not, this did not happen because of them, the CEOs, because they oftentimes have different campaigns within Hamilton County. But they have the ability to help. And so the federal government needs to step up and end this. Unfortunately, it can't be ended in November because I believe it was October the 26th where they could funnel the money into the November SNAP program. But they can move quickly, and we need to demand that they move quickly to make this happen. Just the thought of not only food, which is our basic need, then to think about housing. Because I had said earlier, we were so proud of our homeless population that gone down some. But this is nothing, this is extremely serious. And I said at the press conference, can you imagine somebody who hasn't eaten in six or seven days? They are not going to be in a good mood. They are going to try to figure out how to get some food for their children. The adults that take medicine are going to need food for their medicine. And so we hope that people can stay abreast of the progress of what's going and not go out in the community and do anything. I'm not saying that's going to happen. But desperate times, people become very desperate. And I just pray that the people, and I talked to some, as I said earlier, CEOs who seemed positive about giving some money. It's 240 million a year for food stamps, only 19 million a month. So if they want to give a portion of that or just give enough for the children, certainly we'll accept that. And so because of that, in our urgency as a board, we have decided, and it's further on in our agenda, that we want to give out 220,000 more dollars from our ARPA funds that we had left over. And I'm sure Madam President will talk more about that. But I'm glad that's how urgent it is for us, and we will be busily looking for more money that we can give to help this process. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese.
Thank you. Oh, camera, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Could I just say I have emails from the property tax issue that I'll pass over to the clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to start off with the SNAP benefits and the impact that it has had. On Tuesday, we had the presentations, and we heard from the Free Store Food Bank, JFS, CMHA, as well, about the impact of the SNAP benefits. I just want to say that this is a pouting on of already stress and strains economically that are happening in our county, in our state, and in our country. We have federal workers, and I don't want to take this lightly, federal workers who have been furloughed and who are working for free. The last time we talked about working for free, that's why we got the Freedom Center down there. We said we're not doing that anymore. They're working and not getting paid. We can't take that lightly. At the same time, these furloughed workers have houses and mortgages, and the first of the month is coming. And at the first of the month, all the bills are due. Gas and electric, water, mortgage, rent, all of it's due at the first of the month. And they are working and not getting paid. And I think everybody should be standing up against that. Everyone. Everyone. We haven't seen that since slavery, where you work and you don't get paid. Number two, so that's a strain economically. This is an economic fight that's going on. Everything is about the economics right now. And if, for me, that's what I'm looking at, at this county commission, I'm looking at the economics. And I've been voted in not to represent myself. I'm voted in to represent the people that sent me down here, and they're out there and they're drowning. They're drowning right now. This is the haves and the have-nots. And the haves, they up here, they keep getting more and more and more and more money. And the have-nots, they want to put everybody in the have-nots. They want the veterans in the have-nots. They want the senior citizens in the have-nots. They want the middle-class community and homeowners in the have-nots. They want poor in the have-nots. They want to put everybody in the have-nots and have this little group of people have the haves. They don't care if you work every day, you bust your butt, you try to get a piece of the American dream. They don't care. They want you in the have-nots. They want cheap labor, free labor. They got free labor right now. People working and not getting paid. And threaten them, if you quit, you're not going to get hired back. This is an economic fight. And so when we going into the budget, we're going in, everything I've said this to the administrator, I'm going to say it again, I want to comb every single fund we have. I need to know all bank accounts, not just over here and over there. Then when the big boys come in, the haves come in, all of a sudden, we done found some more money. When the haves show up, oh, it's in this little pot over here. And we got nothing for the have-nots. I'm going to be fighting like hell for the have-nots. We cannot squeeze everybody to have no money. It's going to collapse. With that being said, we learned that we have needing $19 million a month we were getting to help people with SNAP. With that being said, the narrative that, oh, the SNAP people, they ain't working, they just sitting around, no. We found that over 90% of them, according to our JFS director, they working every day. Some two and three jobs, but can't make the ends meet. We learned that the SNAP helps the veterans, serve this country. You say you love them, don't just love them on Veterans Day. Love them every day. It affects the babies and the children. They didn't ask to come into this world of chaos. And you're saying you don't want them to have anything to eat. They can't get an apple or orange. Senior citizens that pay their dues. I'm going to fight for the senior citizens, because one day I want somebody fighting like hell for me when I get that age. Senior citizens pay their dues, retire, can't even retire in peace. Because they about to lose their home on one side, on the other side, Social Security might get cut. On the other side, go to the grocery store, can't get no benefits. This is chaos. This is a 911 emergency, and we can't treat it with the same, well, we always do it this way, and this is how the government work? That's out the door. It's unprecedented times. We got to everything with our last breath. I want to be able to say with my last breath, I combed everything. And then if I couldn't help, I just couldn't help. We got to be uncomfortable because they uncomfortable. It's an uncomfortable time. Mental health is going to go even higher. Because now people who didn't have mental health issues going to have some when they can't make these ends meet, can't make that car note, can't make that house note, can't make that note for their kid in college. I done talked to them. So they said, man, my child's in college, and I, man, I don't want him to come home. I got to try to make it, but my reserves is going out. We talking about our reserves. What about their reserves? Their reserves is going like this. Going through the reserves like water. So this SNAP piece is hurting on a lot of levels. Because we don't just have SNAP. We got SNAP, we got property taxes, we over here, we got, go to the grocery store, that done went up. We got the gas. Everything's going up. And we got federal workers working for $0 right now. 97,000 county residents are affected. $19 million every month. We can't make that up at the pantry. Now, we got a bill on here, and we're going to support it to give more money to the Free Store. We've given them, I think, almost $2 million before. But the Free Store was struggling when we was doing $19 million. The Free Store is not the grocery store. It's the stopgap. It's not the grocery store. And as the Free Store Food Bank, Kirk said, Reitberg said, we can't pantry ourselves up out of here. That is not the answer. We can try to put a Band-Aid, but that's not the answer. With that being said, we got to all rise up, and we got to, we can't play politics with people's lives. These people's lives. At the same time, we can't have legislation that's going to cost you more, where you can't go to the hospital, can't go to the doctor, can't get your medicine. It's not an either-or. It's not an either-or. I have asked the, before I say I've asked the administration, let me just say this. It's $240 million a year. We also, and I support Commissioner Dumas, when she said, let's try to get some of the private sector also to step up. That's important. Because remember, the have-nots are over here. So now, the haves can't come in and cry broke. Don't cry broke over here with the haves. Over here, you say, well, I got a foundation, and we always give it, because I done talked to some of them, because I called, and they said, well, you know, we already trying to do this. But then you look and see there's a ballroom that's going to be put together. I don't know who would be dancing at this time, but there's a ballroom for 300 million. We need 240 million. We need 240 million. There's a ballroom for 300 million. And then it is, they said it's privately funded, so again, those private people. And then you look at, well, who's on the list? Amazon. Now, I do a lot of shopping over there. Apple, I got Apple. Meta done gave money. Microsoft, Google done gave money, and this one really got me. T-Mobile. Now, you done went up on my bill, and you up here with a ballroom. You up here, you gonna text me, talking about this due. Hey, my, I didn't, I don't want none of my money going to a ballroom. But my point is, if we can get 300 million from the haves, right? And we over here, we need 240 million, we gonna need the haves to come over here, and we need some anonymous donors of 240 million, and that will keep us for the year, while y'all fix it up in Washington or whatever you do. The other thing I want to say is that we send our money to Washington. We don't, when, when it's tax time, they, they not exempting us. We, we got to send it up there. Where the hell is our money? We want the money back from Washington to help with SNAP and other programs. Now, we've asked the state, as you see today, it's been always, we got to ask the state, the state got to step up. Every time you go to the state, we can't do it, we working on it, always over in the House, always over in the Senate, oh, no, we gonna put this together, oh, the governor, I can't do it without the legislature. Somebody gotta step up up there. Now, I know it's lopsided. It's only one party, and the other one don't really have to show up. It ain't enough numbers. But this is a humanitarian issue. How can you live with yourself knowing grandma done went hungry? How can you live with yourself knowing a kid can't get an apple or an orange? How can you live with yourself? This is humanitarian issue. This ain't no politics. You go to the grocery store, they not asking you Democrat, Republican, they want to know, can you pay for these groceries? And then lastly, we know that this will affect potentially prices for those who ain't on SNAP. If you're selling 500 apples, you can get a certain price. Now, you only selling 100 apples. Don't you know those apples gonna go up? They teach you that in elementary. You know, the apples, you gonna, it's gonna go up. Prices will rise. Retailers and farmers markets that are in food deserts will get killed. We got one now in Avondale, the tariffs are killing them. They say, oh, they ain't got enough product. The tariffs done got a hold of them. They're not big enough to deal with these tariffs. So they had to get another distributor. Then they just got approved to take the SNAP, and now the SNAP is gone. I've asked the administrator for the following. Number one, I talked about it earlier, we, I need to comb every, I need to know every account we got and what's in it. Number two, let us know if there's any authority that we have to do anything to reduce any costs. We looking for breaks. People are looking for breaks. There's anything we can reduce any costs on, provide any discounts on, anything that we can freeze anything on. I'd like to know about it. I'd like to present what I call a people's discount budget, that discounts for the people. Also, I'd like to have our page, 513relief.org is a wonderful portal. Everybody goes there. It has been incredible. I'd like to have on that page, though, a place where people can get the information, 'cause they rely on us. Here's where you go, who's got a pantry, who's got food, who's got, what discount, what programs can you get? It needs to be updated on the 513 Relief page, so that people know this is the truthful information, because I know there's some misinformation out there on social media platforms. And then if people come up to us, we can say, hey, just go to the 513 Relief portal, and it, it can tell you where to go and what to do. We had HUD recommendations this week, and while I really thank the committee, you've done a fantastic job, but when you were meeting, we didn't have the SNAP problem. When you were meeting, some of these other economic things did not come into effect. I've asked them to go back and look at upping and prioritizing the food initiative portions. Some of the food pieces were low in numbers. We need to prioritize that, in my opinion. And I'd like to see that, and then once that's done, I'd like to see it expedited. Everything we do must be expedited. We can't, oh, we gotta get a, the contract, and the contract now gonna take six months and seven months. Get these contracts like we do when we do these big projects. We do these big projects, it's, it mean, it's a deadline. If the Bengals can have a deadline, the public can have a deadline. Let's move quick, expeditiously, to get these funds to help people. The other thing is, CMHA was mentioned earlier, Mr. Johnson, I think he is one of the biggest experts in affordable housing. But what got me was some of the vouchers, 'cause we, we are big on affordable housing. Our board has been the most bold on funding for affordable housing. But I'd like to see some funds that might not be used, some of those ARPA funds, to see, can we get a voucher? So he got people, he got a place for him to live, he got the people looking to live. All he need is a voucher, and they can get in right now. So I'd like to see what we can do. Now, they might come back and say, well, we don't have a contract, and I don't, find something. We've been doing subcontract with everybody else. Let's figure it out. We can get these people in a home now, and some of them are seniors. I think it's 2,000 people waiting. We got a place, they got a, they got the people, all they need is help with the voucher. And I would like to do that, to try to get them in, to stabilize. And then my other piece is looking at our Office of Small Business, because seeing if we can help, is there anything we can do to help these small food retailers? Farmers markets, Finley Market, the grocery store in Avondale, all of those grocery stores, the small retailers who will be affected, is there anything we can do to help them to provide food for them? Of course, the 513 Relief Bus has done an excellent job, helped 30,000 people, but this is what the 513 Relief Bus was built for, times like this. So I know they're working. I asked to work on some additional stops, coordinate it with Free Store Food Bank, with the money we're getting ready to give them. And I want to see if we can get some gift cards, some food gift cards, that we might be able, we can't feed everybody, but we can have some food gift cards. I know JFS has done those in the past. So that's what I sent to Mr. Aludo and the administration, and I'm hoping we can move on this. For me, it's, it's Operation Hamilton County, and the times that we're in right now, which is a 911. Now, does that negate the state got to do their job? No. We gonna still keep pushing the state. In fact, I have a petition out, and we got people signing it. Anybody can sign it, so that the state knows that we're, we're serious, and the federal people know that it's not just us as elected officials talking, and people can sign that online petition that we're going to deliver to them. Moving along, I want to congratulate everybody who received the CEG Excellence Awards this year at the gala. I want to shout out Pastor Booth, Paul Booth Jr., Pastor Garrett, and First Lady Garrett. Angelita Moreno-Jones received the First Hall of Fame Award as a small business, and I want to thank, I want to congratulate all the honorees. I was able to give a congratulatory video to them, and thanking them for all that they do. Also, let's see. As mentioned earlier, I did attend the Hamilton County Land Reutilization Corporation Board Meeting, and one thing that popped out at me, I would like to get some more information. I saw some properties, I got a chance to read it after we left the meeting, that the zoo purchased, and they purchased them for $200. I thought I saw $200 on there, a couple of them. Then they got these luxurious homes that they're selling. And I remember the zoo said they needed the levee and all that. How are we doing levees, and we out here building homes and selling them? So I'd like to have more information about the, that, how that worked with the zoo, because we didn't, of course, we didn't put an increase on there, but still, you know, they got, they got a levee. They're the only ones, and I love my zoo. But now we got housing and buying it for $200 from the Port Authority or the Land Bank, and then luxurious homes. So I just, I do want to get just more information, so I have a better understanding. Last but not least, there is an election. It's on Tuesday. None of us are on the ballot, but every election is important throughout Hamilton County, villages, townships, and cities. The last day to early vote will be this Saturday and Sunday, and then you have to go on Tuesday to the Board of Elections. So I'll be there Saturday at 10:30. Anybody want to join me, and we march and vote. Your vote is power, your voice is power. Don't give it up. No matter who you vote for, you should get out and vote. So that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I too wanted to mention the election next Tuesday. Of course, there's early voting this weekend at the Board of Elections, so encourage people, if they can't make it on Tuesday, to take advantage of those weekend hours. And go vote. It's your obligation, it's your right, get out there and vote. We've got a lot of important issues on the ballot this year, no matter where you live in Hamilton County. Couple of things, I, I attended the Metro Now launch of the fourth zone. These are the metro vehicles that are smaller than a regular bus and that are moving in, inside of communities. They've launched a couple in Forest Park, Pleasant Run, Springdale, Sharonville, Northgate, Mount Haly. And the fourth launch is in Blue Ash, Montgomery. So represented the commission at that and was happy to talk about the importance of that launch and Metro doing their Metro Now, you know, configuration in Hamilton County. Also attended a session, it's an HCRX session for faith leaders, to help them have the tools to talk to their congregations about addiction and about the resources available to those that are suffering from addiction. And so just stopped by that, thanks to those that were leading the session, very grateful for that work. Went also to the Wasted Food Summit, this I think was yesterday, on behalf of the commission. The resource, which is a county organization, was one of the sponsors. It's an important time to talk about food insecurity and capturing food and not wasting food on the heels of all the things that we've been talking about related to SNAP. So it was a packed house over at Memorial Hall, all of which trying to, again, address food insecurity and not wasting food, and really diverting it from the landfill. I also did a proclamation at the Hamilton County Conservation District. It was their anniversary, I think it was 80 years for the Conservation District. I mean, this is really amazing work that they do to stabilize things in our community. I, I remember going out with one of them, and there was a landslide in somebody's backyard, and so we went into the valley and tried to figure out what was causing the landslide. But this is the kind of work they do, and it's really important. So they've been around for 80 years, and so we, we celebrated that anniversary. In addition to that, and it's been mentioned by all, all the county commissioners, I wanted to talk about by leave number three. So this is the by leave that we talked about at our last meeting, to try to do what we can do here in Hamilton County to respond to the fact that people aren't getting SNAP benefits as of November 1st. Now, you know, really, the federal government should be taking care of this. This is their obligation, they're not fulfilling their obligation, and so we are trying to step in here, and I, I don't know what's going on at the state level, and it's really irrelevant to this conversation, because this is what we can do. And so we have all three decided that we wanted to look at the ARPA funds that have waterfall down, that are from other projects that didn't need this funding, and reallocate these dollars to the Free Store Food Bank, because as you say, we're in an emergency situation. Staff reacted very quickly. Thank you, Holly Christman, for doing this. There is $222,954.66 available at this time for reallocation, and so we have all talked about this. So commissioners, with your deference, I'd like to move that forward and offer a motion to approve of by leave number three. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for that. All right. I do have something, I just want to read it out. So we've talked a lot about who's obligated to do what, and, you know, federal government, state government, local government. In the end, people count on us to do what we're supposed to do. Government has a role to play. We are the collective, right? People pay taxes so that we have deputies, so that we have roads, so we have bridges, so we have 911 systems, because individually, we can't get these things done. We have to work as a collective. And this is what government is all about, and this is our responsibility. So when we have the federal government shut down, not fulfilling their obligation or their responsibility, it puts everybody on the hook. And I agree that the private sector can step in here, just as we have just stepped in, and try to plug the gap for what is not happening at the federal level. But I do want to say that we have systems built in place, and it, and we should be fulfilling our own obligations. So I just want to read this quote, I read it at the State House, it was the day I left the State House, because I really, it speaks to, I think, the importance of government doing what we are supposed to do in partnership with the private community and the citizens of our communities. So it says, and it's, it's a Bill Moyers quote, it says, "Charity is commendable. Everyone should be charitable, but justice aims to create a social order in which, if individuals choose not to be charitable, people still don't go hungry, unschooled, sick, or without care. Charity depends on the vicissitudes of whim and personal wealth. Justice depends on commitment instead of circumstance." And I think this speaks to where we are right now. So again, I know we've all called for it, we want the federal government to get back to work and to stop the shutdown. So with that, we're gonna move on to the, to Jeff Aludo's reports and then the consent agenda.
Thanks, commissioners. No real by leave comments. Did have the opportunity to be in another community for a few days at a professional development opportunity, a city, city-county managers' conference. Just want to say it's great to be back in Hamilton County in Cincinnati, and it never succeeds, like going away someone to, somewhere to realize how good of a community this really is. And when you see other communities and what they have to offer, and there are some fantastic communities out there, really how strong of a community Hamilton County is for all the reasons that we celebrate every time we do one of the, one of these meetings. So I just want to mention that aside from the weather, it's, it's, it's always good to see how, how good we, we have it here. I do have a few items on the, the by leave agenda, commissioners. The first, and Commissioner Drehouse, I'll defer to you on item number one, it's, it's an appointment.
Yeah. Happy to talk about this one. It's a resolution appointing members to the Hamilton County Economic and Community Support Advisory Council. Julie Combs and Curtis Hollis have stepped up as volunteers. We're grateful for that service. And so I'm going to move that we approve of by leave number one.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you, commissioners. You've already taken item, action on item by leave number three. Do want to also point out, in addition to Holly, who does fantastic work on this, Sarah Adams is our ARPA coordinator, so I want to thank Sarah for all of her work pulling that, that resolution together for the board as well. And then moving back to by leave number two, commissioners, this is actually just the rejection of a bid for some security infrastructure down on the banks. Phil Beck and Joe Paul and others have worked together to find a more cost-effective way of, of providing this, this service and infrastructure down at the bank, so we are comfortable recommending rejection of this particular bid.
Any comments or questions?
No comments.
All right, I'm gonna move that we approve of by leave number two.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think Phil heard me call his name, so Phil, no, I was just, just saying, good, great job.
Fast.
No more items on the by leave agenda, commissioners.
All right, let's move on to the consent agenda.
Walk through these briefly for the board. Item number one is a FEMA grant related to the Selly Creek Stormwater Project out in Springfield Township, and designating Springfield Township as the board's fiscal agent in implementing that grant, it's for $105,000. We've taken some additional action on the Selly Creek project through some additional stormwater management grants that we've given to Springfield Township, so it's good to get that project moving. Item number two is a budget adjustment. These are for legal services at Paycor. It is for parking, is an adjustment to parking facilities, as well as a, an opioid grant in social services and justice systems. We've pulled item number three from the agenda that related to the, the bid rejection that we just did. Item number four is a, accepting a purchase order related to the communication center, specifically some call logging and recording system that they have with Motorola for $180,000. Item number five is a credit card fee for $29. Item number six is the purchase of a Ford Escape in Job and Family Services for $29,557. Item number seven- Item number seven is the purchase of an F, a Ford F-250, uh, in the county auditor's office for $50,600. Item number eight is the purchase of a Ford F-250 in the engineer's office for $62,222. Item number nine is executing a lease, uh, a, uh, an agreement for leased space for the public defender for space at 125 Court Street. Uh, and the dollar value, you see there is the total dollar value for, for the lease. The average annual, I believe, is around $380,000. Item number 10, uh, is a resolution authorizing a solid waste grant with playful wanderings for, uh, composting equipment in the amount of $2,320. Item number 11 is authorizing hospital commission refunding bonds for work which benefited Christ Hospital. Uh, there is no impact to the county general fund on this item, so it's listed as zero, and it is a refunding bond. Uh, item 12, uh, get into some Job and Family Services items. Uh, the first item is actually a revenue item, is a grant from the Dave Thomas Foundation, uh, to provide funding supporting child-focused adoption recruitment services in the amount of $540,000. Item 13 is an agreement, uh, with Up Together, uh, for emancipation support services at $1.709 million. Item number 14 is an agreement between Hamilton County and the Village of Newtown. Uh, this is for building inspection services provided, uh, for the Village of Newtown. This gets to our shared services discussion coming up here, uh, shortly in Anderson Township. Uh, item 15 is the report of no objection to one liquor permit, um, at 9540 Corrine Avenue at the Applebee's Restaurant there, uh, and that is your consent agenda, commissioners.
Thank you, Jeff. Good to have you back. Um, could you expound a little bit on item number 12? This is the revenue item for JFS. We so seldom see revenue items related to JFS.
Mr. Nelson is here. I'll defer, uh, to, uh, John Nelson.
Just deliver the good news.
Do you mind?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner, and the person who walked down the landslide was, uh...
Oh, that's right. You, yes, 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 everybody, you and me and...
Yeah. But, uh, yeah, so this, uh, particular foundation, uh, helps us, um, basically work with recruiters, who prepare families to adopt children who might have special needs. So, this is basically a grant that helps us help recruit families that will be able to adopt kiddos that need additional, that might have some special needs. So, it's a, it's a great grant. It helps our kiddos, helps special needs kiddos as well, so...
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. Finally, some good news, right? Um, all right, Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
That's awesome. I also was gonna ask about, um, item 12. Is this the first time we've gotten this grant, or do it help?
I believe it is a recurring grant. We've received it in the past, so...
Okay, very good. And I was gonna say, just in general, item six on this, uh, Ford Escape for $29,000, sounds, was that included a trade-in or something like that?
No, I, our, uh, procurement team and our building services team really called around, and, uh, one of the things that we did very carefully was made sure that the, uh, dealer that we're purchasing from is a Hamilton County dealer as well. That's the feedback that we took from the board, so thank you, yeah.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
I just want to say thank you for that purchase. I do have another question on something else. Okay, item number two, um, is a question on the budget adjustment, and when it goes into there, the description says, uh, stadium's a supplemental appropriation for consulting services, 75,000 banks operation. What is that?
Yeah, so that is when we switched over, uh, legal counsel earlier in the year, um, we are still, uh, um, as the board is aware, we didn't have a firm number to set in terms of the, the budget for that, so, um, as we are doing work with Dinsmore, uh, we are adjusting that purchase order just to make sure we have funding available for them through the remainder of the year. So, there may be a couple of those coming, and we'll get the board a full report on the transition of that counsel and the, uh, and the, the financial implications of that.
Gotcha, okay. And then the other one has parking facilities, supplemental transfer to fund the bank's operation. Was that, taking it from there and...
No, that, that is, that is, that is different, and that is, so the beginning of the year, we appropriated, uh, we made the appropriation for all of our bank's operations and the parking. This is actually moving the cash into that, so it's, it's nothing that the board really hasn't seen before, but it is moving the cash there. Rob, um, we're talking, Rob just came in.
I just ran that one in.
There you go. So, it's, it's the, uh, the bank's operation, the bank's operations moving the cash into that to...
Yeah, basically, the, uh, Bank's Operation Fund. We appropriated it last year, and it went live, but we didn't have the funding source, and now we're saying the funding source is coming from parking, so we're putting parking revenue in the Bank's Operations Fund to fund, to fund the fund.
Because the board, Bank's operation is funded sometimes through, from some different sources.
Yeah, it could be transinoxymetax or something like that.
So, when we know where that funding is coming from, at the end of the year, we actually move the cash in, so that's what we're doing there.
Yep, because we don't want to go negative. We don't have a negative cash fund, so...
That's good. I just saw when it says transfer, I didn't know what we were talking about. Also, on the, um, I know I had asked about this last year, and, uh, they never did give it to us publicly, it wasn't just for me, but I just would like to see the parking, uh, contracts, or any of them ending, should they be ending? What are they? Who has it? Because we have a number of parking, uh, contract arrangements down there. Uh, we have one, I think, Heritage Bank, and Mimi has one, and then some of the, um, the condos or apartments have a, just want to kind of get, we hear a lot about, uh, you know, heard a lot about the Bengals, obviously, but there's others that have contracts as well, and I'd like to know who they are and when do they end, and how does that, you know? Those are revenues also.
Yeah, and I think Dinsmore was doing a summary of all of those, so, um, I'll work with Phil to figure out where they are, and that, and we'll get the board that full summary report.
Okay, yeah, because I think factoring that into the revenue, because if we're, if we got contracts, we're giving away some of the revenue, so I'd like to know what that is, and is that something we should be taking another look at?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve of consent agenda items one and two, and then four to 15.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.